Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the City Council Regular Meeting for the City of Warrenville for May 21st, 2018. I have a roll call, please. Alderman Ashower.
Here.
Alderman Berry.
Here.
Alderman Bavir.
Here.
Alderman Davalos.
Here.
Alderman Goodman.
Here.
Alderman Hoffman.
Here.
Alderman Widener.
Here.
Alderman Wilson.
Here.
Thank you, Emily. Would you please stand as you are able and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, living in justice for all.
We have a proclamation this evening, and we have someone to receive that for us. Kevin Leonard is here to take the proclamation for National Poppy Day. I should've wore my poppy on my lapel tonight, but I left it in my car.
Everybody says that, Mayor.
Okay, then I'm in good company.
Yes.
Always leave it on the dashboard, because otherwise...
For next year.
No, just to let everybody know that you bought it, right? National Poppy Day, May 25th, 2018, whereas the annual sale of Buddy Poppies by the Veterans of Foreign Wars and the American Legion of the United States has been officially recognized and endorsed by governmental leaders since 1922, and whereas Buddy Poppies are assembled by disabled veterans, and the proceeds of this worthy fundraising campaign are used exclusively for the benefit of disabled and needy veterans, and the widows and orphans of deceased veterans, and whereas the basic purpose of the annual poppy, the annual sale of Buddy Poppies by the Veterans of Foreign Wars and the American Legions is eloquently reflected in the desire to honor the dead by helping the living, and now therefore I, David L. Brummel, Mayor of the City of Warrenville, do hereby urge the citizens of this community to recognize the merits of this cause by contributing generously to its support through the purchase of the Buddy Poppies on the day set aside for the distribution of these symbols of appreciation for the sacrifices of our honored dead. I urge all patriotic citizens to wear Buddy Poppy as mute evidence of our gratitude to the men and women of this country who have risked their lives in defense of the freedoms which we continue to enjoy as American citizens, and to donate to Buddy Poppy Days during the week of May 19th through 28th, 2018. Kevin, thank you for coming this evening.
Thank you.
Do you want to say a few words?
Not really, no. But thank you for everyone's support. I've seen a number of faces with some lighter wallets than others, Mr. Menzer, but thank you for your contributions.
Very good, thanks, Kevin.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it.
This is the part of the meeting that we always set aside for citizen comments. We have two citizens who have signed up this evening to speak to us. We'll begin with Phil Salerno and then Bob Seibert. Phil, you know the drill, you've been here before, welcome.
Hello, everyone. Last week was the first week of our re-grand opening and 32nd anniversary of being in Warrenville, and a lot of people don't know the story. Back in April, we lost our supplier, Central Grocers, and so now we're scrambling for product. We started buying out of Madison, Wisconsin, a place called Circo, and negotiated a position with Super Value, which is 4,000 store operation, IGA, you may be familiar with them. Quite an operation. They came in, revamped the store, put a lot of the new products, redid the gluten-free section, the hardware section, did pretty much revamped the whole store. So we thought that was a re-grand opening effort on their part and ours to put it together. Store is pretty much set now. People that haven't been there for a while, last week came in and made comment to the fact that it was looking good. So I thought I'd come here and do a little commercial, because we did have one hitch in our promotion, which was we put together a card which would wrap all your mail in Doesn't seem anybody got it, because it's never got out. So the first week of coupons, which are very generous, never made it out, so we're gonna use them again. We're gonna, you know, honor them this week, so there's two weeks of coupons. Now, I'm gonna pass them out, I know some of you people are from Warrenville, and, you know, we'll probably, hopefully get this in the mail this week, otherwise you might see me in the parking lot hanging from a tree with the effort that everybody's trying to put forth. Now, Saturday was a great day. We had a lot of fun giving kids hot dogs, some Nathan hot dogs, and we had Batman there, and they were taking pictures with him, and if anybody stopped in, we had a DJ in the lot from 11 to 3, which we will do for the next couple Saturdays. So this Saturday, we got the Black Knight coming in, not on horseback, but he'll be there, and I grabbed this week's ad by mistake. So this is the ad that came out last week, and I put the coupon sheets and the revamped deli cafe menus in here for everyone, and if you already get one, give it to someone out of town, and come in and visit the store. Everything is very helpful at that point. We also, for the first time, are giving a plus 10% bag sale on all the meat, frozen meat and fresh meat. So we've got some great prices on the meat, and we gave 10% off this week and next week. So 67 said chicken legs, less than 10%, I mean, it's good value. So I appreciate your support as a partner in this town, and if it wasn't for my liquor department, we might not be here. I want to make that point clear. I understand we have an issue next Monday, so I just thought I'd pass that through, is that we really depend on the liquor.
Thank you, Phil. If you want to, just leave those with the clerk, she can distribute them out for us. Thank you.
Our next meeting is Tuesday, not Monday.
What's that? Oh, yeah, and the meeting, Phil, is Tuesday next week.
Because of Memorial Day.
Right, right. Thank you, Phil.
Bob Seibert, Albright Court. I don't know how many of you read this, but there was a revised fiscal and economic impact analysis, Cantera Apartments, May 2nd. The problem here is you voted on this on April 16th. This was revised, changing their figures, but then the information was already available, because I spoke on February 8th, the public hearing with the figures. On February 14th, the Community Development Department sent a memo to the developer to get a physical impact study. That was the study of March 19th, which, when I saw that study, had major errors. Over $200,000 in attributed to revenue that could not be attributed to the City of Warrenville was a negative. Stated that at the Plan Commission in March, did nothing. I came April 16th, before this board made the same statement, again, nothing. So the information was available, but the Plan Commission didn't get it, the City Council didn't get it, but most importantly, the citizens had no defense or information on the true document. This document, May 2nd, changed all the figures on what I had been stating for the last three months. However, they also made two other errors. The one error that they made was the three apartment complexes went through and established the cost per new employee the same. Am I the one on Ferry Road and in March 19th, Cantera? However, in May 2nd, they changed, reduced their process of the cost of employees, because if they didn't do that, they'd be showing a negative, and they wanted to show a positive. So they reduced that. But also, they continued including pension fund money as if it were general fund money. So I'm sure John would not want to see his pension fund being transferred to the general fund. That's what is in the May 2nd document. So we have a document, and I'm saying is there's a problem when you vote on something, you, the individuals know that there are problems, you ignore the problems, pass the document, then come back and file a revised document that still has errors. I believe you should go back to step number one. You had information, it was given to you, you never accepted.
Thank you, Bob. We'll move on to official and staff comments, beginning with the mayor. Just a couple of things. One, a reminder that at the VFW, until Memorial Day is the healing field of honor with the replica of the Vietnam Memorial Wall. Visitors are welcome and appreciated for that. The flags are quite impressive up there. Hopefully, the rain didn't do any damage to the presentation, but the opening ceremony was on the 19th. There will be a bigger ceremony on Memorial Day at the VFW also, but everyone is encouraged to visit in the meantime to see those two displays, they're very nice. Also coming up, before too long, before you know it, will be concerts in the Commons by the Warrenville Library District. Thirteen wonderful concerts again this summer, right next door here between the library and City Hall. They are always fun, and they are free, so everyone again is welcome to come up and join us for those concerts for the summer. The first one would be June 6th, the last one would be August 29th, so it's only a hop, skip, and a jump until we're having those concerts again. That's all I have for this evening. Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor. Asking for help this Saturday. Warrenville and Bloom is getting ready to plant the flowers in the planters around City Hall by the Police Department, in front of the library, cleaning up the prairie plantings, the butterfly gardens. So 9 o'clock at the gazebo on Saturday. We would sure appreciate your help. The more hands we have, the faster we'll get done, and we do appreciate your help. Thanks.
Thank you, Emily. Treasurer?
Yes, I want to remind everybody that we had a bike rodeo this last Saturday. We had a good crowd, decent weather, and about 85 children that completed the safety course and got pictures with the mayor and a certificate and a Dairy Queen coupon. Also like to thank Dairy Queen for providing the coupons once again this year, and we certainly do appreciate it.
Thank you, Larry. Alderman? Okay, city administrator?
I don't have anything officially to add, but my understanding is the meeting is being recorded, and hopefully later on the agenda, you'll approve a piece of equipment that'll help us get back to having Channel 10, Opera Bowl 2, but it is being recorded, and last week's meeting was posted on YouTube. It took us a few days to patch it all together, but as of Friday, I believe it was posted and up. So we're making great progress on that and trying to get it all back the way it should be working. We're not broadcasting live, but we are playing the replays.
Thank you, John, and I'm sorry I missed Alderman Widener.
Yeah, speaking of what Treasurer Brenner was discussing, the bike rodeo, I also wanted to thank many of our business partners that provided items to give away to the bicyclists who participated at the rodeo. There was a lot of city staff that were involved, and many volunteers who also came to this event, which is co-hosted by the Warrenville Park District and the City of Warrenville. So it was indeed a successful event, and we thank all the people who helped get the pieces together to make it successful. Thank you.
Thank you. It reminded me that when we were, Mary and I were walking our dogs in St. James Farm on Sunday afternoon, a mother and a little girl was by, and the little girl was riding a brand-new bike that she got at the bike rodeo, and I said hi to her, and she had to holler, "Oh, Mom, there's the mayor." So that was kind of neat, to see her out enjoying that bike with her mom. Thank you, Alderman. Attorney? Thank you, Barb. We'll move on then to the approval of the agenda for this evening. Alderman Widener?
Motion to approve the agenda for the May 21st, 2018 City Council Regular Meeting.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any changes to the agenda? Alderman Berry?
I'd like to remove M.
Okay, any other changes? Alderman Goodman?
Yes, I'd like to remove 6K.
K. Okay, do the secondor and, or the motioner and the secondor agree to... Oh, another one, Alderman?
6J.
J? Anybody else before I move on? Okay, motioner and secondor agree?
Agreed.
Okay, very good. Then we have a motion for the approval of the agenda as amended. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion, the agenda is approved as amended. We have a couple of sets of minutes that need approval also. Alderman Widener?
Motion to approve the minutes of the May 7th, 2018 City Council Regular Meeting, and to approve the minutes of the May 14th, 2018 Community Development Committee Regular Meeting.
Second.
Second by Alderman Wilson. Any discussion of those minutes? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carries, and the minutes are approved. The consent agenda as amended. Item 6A, accept Plan Commission recommendation, waive second reading, and pass ordinance 02018-15, approving zoning ordinance text amendments that define miniature horses and allow keeping of miniature horses in residential districts. B, accept Plan, accept Community Development Committee recommendation, waive second reading, and pass ordinance 02018-16, approving the water main easement agreement with the Forest Preserve District of DuPage County. C, accept Community Development Committee recommendation, waive second reading, and pass ordinance 02018-17, approving the water main easement agreement with the Winfield Township Road District. D, accept Community Development Committee recommendation, waive second reading, and pass ordinance 02018-18, amending the city code to prohibit parking on the east side of Talbot Avenue, north of Calumet Avenue West. Excuse me. E, accept Community Development Committee recommendation, waive second reading, and pass ordinance 02018-19, approving the sanitary sewer plat of easement on the Kleinman property. F, accept Community Development Committee recommendation, waive second reading, and pass ordinance 02018-20, approving the sanitary sewer plat of easement on the Conforty property. G, accept Community Development Committee recommendation, waive second reading, and pass ordinance 02018-21, amending the city code to add a new section 7-2-6, vacation of public streets and alleys, and endorse the May 10th, 2018 revised review and processing policy. H, accept Community Development Committee recommendation, pass resolution R2018-17, approving the letter of understanding with the Illinois Department of Transportation for maintenance of sidewalks. I, accept Community Development Committee recommendation and pass resolution R2018-18, approving the contract with James J. Bennetts and Associates Incorporated for Deal Road Turn Lane Improvements Phase 2 Final Engineering Services in the amount of $50,815. L, accept Community Development Committee recommendation and endorse a policy statement prioritizing the city's review and processing of building permits and development applications that include private solar installations. N, receive and file minutes of the Environmental Advisory Commission Regular Meeting held on April 17th, 2018. O, receive and file draft minutes of the Plan Commission and Zoning Board of Appeals Regular Meeting held on May 10th, 2018. P, receive and file report of invoices paid up to May 16th, 2018, in the amount of $73,381.49. Q, authorize expenditures for invoices due honor before June 4th, 2018, in the amount of $2,000, excuse me, $271,409.81. And R, receive and file report of debit card expenditures for the month of April 2018 in the amount of $10,980.67. Alderman Widener?
I move to approve the agenda as presented by Mayor David Brummel.
Second. A motion and a second. I have a roll call, please. Alderman Ashower?
Aye.
Alderman Goodman?
Aye.
Alderman Widener? Alderman Bavir?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Berry?
Aye.
Alderman Davalos?
Aye.
Alderman Hoffman?
Aye.
Okay, we will return to the three items that were removed from the consent agenda. I would remind you that the person that makes the motion is a person who is agreeing to vote in favor of those motions, so may I have someone make the motion for item J? Alderman Davalos?
Yes, I'd like to accept Community Development Committee recommendation and endorse the Lexington Trace Townhome subdivision street width reductions recommended in the staff memo dated May 10th, 2018.
Second by Alderman. Wilson, discussion. Alderman Ashower?
The, actually, I moved to have this taken off, and I continue to disagree with it. The, it was written in the minutes in such a way that it looked like it was less discussion than there was, and the minutes didn't include all the discussion, which I don't have a problem with. But the, I don't agree with this, I don't think it's a good direction for the city, minimizing the input of the fire department. It's a diversion from where we have been, and it's also something the council hasn't actually been brought up, brought along with until this point, till it kind of came to a head. I do support the fire department's recommendations, they were... The, in some of my comments, I had had comments back that said that they were hardline about it, and that's not true at all. They were negotiated, negotiating in their viewpoint, and they weren't far off, so I disagree with the fact that the staff was unwilling to accept their recommendation.
Okay, other discussion. Alderman Bavir?
Yeah, I don't agree with the, with either, and I know in 2007, we signed a document with the fire department, and Appendix D was in there, and that had the 26-foot wide streets, and I don't know where, when we did the 2015 code book, I don't know what happened to all these appendices, but there was about 14 pages of things that really helped the fire department out, and I hope at a later date, we can come back and get all this back in, but that, that used to be standard 26-foot wide street until we went to the new code. Thank you.
Okay, Alderman Hoffman?
Yeah, I don't think we should be going against the fire department's recommendations. It's code, just because it's amendment, and Warrenville hasn't adopted that amendment yet, I think we should still go with the amended fire code. Thank you.
Alderman Davalos?
Thank you. This is a tough issue in a way. I wrestled with this all weekend, going back and forth, talking to different people, reading articles, and, you know, we're talking about competing safety issues here and quality of life issues, and I talked last week about how, sitting up here, how much respect I have for the fire district and what they do and how they keep it safe. I have no question, and I would never tell them how to fight a fire, but when it comes to roads, I think, as I've read more, that the literature and the research is showing that the best practices now, not longer with the best practices now, with what's going on, are, we are over asphalting our streets, making them wider, and as I, as I think about, again, what calls I get from residents, the number-one call is speeding and wider roads. It is very well researched that wider roads cause people to go faster, and that is a safety issue, and so I would always want to make sure that the fire department had enough space to do their job. That's the first thing, but there is, there are a lot of people that, you know, people get hurt, people get injured, I get calls that they don't want the noise, they don't want the speed, they're afraid for their children. The second thing that comes up and is storm order management, and there's an existing floodplain right on this B road, and I know that they are doing things in that development to create compensatory floodplain and to do what the county is calling them to do and we're calling them to do, but the reality is, one of the reasons there hasn't been, one of the reasons there's not been a lot of development on Route 59, is the floodplain, and how much it's going to cost, and what that's going to require of developers, and so part of me, and also, I sat in a few weeks ago on a planning commission meeting for the development, I think MI Homes has across the street, and there was a huge number of people there talking about their fear that that development is going to make their flooding worse. Now, it turns out it may not make it worse, but it's going to, to make it better, it's going to take some work, and so those people were very concerned about flooding. So people want green space, all these things are going on with our roads. It's not just a matter of getting EMS and safety vehicles and into those roads. We have to get them in, but I think we have to make sure we're not over asphalting these roads and making them wider than is necessary, and also, the ordinance... also the ordinances of the city are talking, when there's no parking on either side of the road, you can do twenty feet. So I would ask the fire district, you know, instead of having a case like this and coming when there's a development, you know, come to a planning commission, I mean, sorry, come to a committee of the whole meeting, talk with staff, get something on the agenda and we should have a very open discussion on, do we wanna change the ordinance? I don't know how that's gonna go, but I'd be interested in hearing from the fire district on that in a meeting, in a time and a meeting designed to be talking about that. Um, and then if that, if those, if those ordinance are changed, then we have another ballgame here. But I'm just looking at this from how I interact with residents in my ward and the two big things are speed on roads and flooding. So that's the hat that I'm kinda wearing or that's the input I'm kind of taking and so that is, I did consider maybe doing twenty-four, twenty-five, but as I went back and read about it and what other communities are doing and it, it isn't what other communities are doing. Um, maybe it was, but it isn't now. And so I have to stand on those best practices and so I will vote in favor of this. Doesn't mean I won't vote against it another time in another situation where the whole, where the whole environment and the development is different, but at this point, what we're given, I think twenty feet or twenty-one feet will work. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Widener.
Yeah, I, I guess I echo those same statements that Alderman Davalos was speaking about. There's, there's a trend across the country to make streets more narrow and the reason they're doing that is to improve the neighborhoods and to, uh, make them safer. People in those neighborhoods are able to interact better when they have sidewalks and narrow streets with traffic calming measures and, um, it seems like in most of the country, fire departments are able to adapt and get vehicles that are maneuverable within those, uh, road widths that are, uh, twenty feet. And I think that's what we have here. I think that's, um, a good measure and, um, also it's, it seems to be, you know, a question of, of safety. I understand the fire department's role in trying to keep people safe, but statistically, when you look at the studies, you know, you're far more likely to have pedestrian fatalities and injuries when you have wider streets with traffic going faster than, uh, you would with fire-related injuries and deaths, so I think you have to understand that, uh, you know, once you widen a street to that level, it's not just the fire department vehicles that are going to be going fast. It's, you know, many others and I think, uh, the, the widths are adequate and will, um, improve the community. And I know the structures that we're talking about will be very safe with the sprinkler systems and, uh, I trust that the fire department will be able to adapt and respond as they always do to the, to the different situations that occur in the community and in other communities too that they respond to and I'm very appreciative of their, their service, but, uh, also understand that the city has, uh, a community to build, so thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Goodman.
Yeah, I, I also want to, uh, express my agreement with things that Alderman Davalos had to say. I really appreciate her taking the time to do additional research and to find, you know, new information that's out there that, that talks about the consequences of these kinds of decisions because we're not reinventing the wheel here. You know, the idea of building a street wide enough for a fire truck to get through is not new to this project. It's not new to our community. It's something we have been doing very successfully here in Warrenville for a very long time and that many other people around the world have, have put together all sorts of information for us about it. And what does that information say? Well, the code that we've adopted based on our staff and their expertise on what the fire ordinances adopted for Warrenville should be, the code that we've adopted requires a twenty-foot wide road. So the implication that we're not following the code, I think, is just simply incorrect. I can understand the, the fire department's focus on pu- public safety and focus on fire safety. That is their area of focus, their area of specialization and it's the one thing that they have on their minds. As our Community Development or, Community and Economic Development Director has pointed out to us, we at the city have to have a somewhat broader picture of these questions. I think that our broader picture has to include fire safety, of course, but also has to consider the many things that our director Mensah talked about last week at the meeting in much more detail than I'm going to go into here. And I think that if we don't rely on the professional expertise of our staff when it, who are gonna be rebuilding these roads, when it comes to building the roads in the first place, then I'm not sure what, what we're paying them for. You know, we pay them to, to be our experts on these subjects and yes, they, they take into consideration feedback from the fire department. They also take into consideration information about building codes from building experts, information about stormwater management from the county and its stormwater regulations and our stormwater requirements. They also take into account architectural standards and, you know, many different factors that go into approving a particular development, but we're not voting on what those standards should be, what the fire codes should be. Today, we're voting on this particular development as our current rules are, as they stand today and as they apply to this proposal that's been brought to us. So I support the staff recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Ashauer.
The, um, just a little comment on the best practices that, that I believe Alderman Widener was referring to. If you read the whole context of the document, it talks about height of building, density of project and the road requirements that it takes to fight fires with that type of structure. And that seems to be something that's been totally ignored. What I read talks about a twenty-seven foot wide road in that document for that type of a development. The, uh, with parking on one side, which was what the, uh, fire department asked for, but the, um, it, it's the whole context. We can, I could find an argument on both sides out of that document. If you read it in its entirety, it talks about the whole thing and if you try to represent it fairly in summary, it justifies what the fire department told us last week.
Okay, any additional discussion? Alderman Wilson.
Yeah, I happen to agree also with what some of the other individual members have said here. This is a project that we've, our, we've, our people have looked at, our staff has looked at and the discussion that we have that last week was very, very informative and very necessary perhaps in the future, but again, to get to the point, our vote tonight is to approve this recommendation based upon a staff's recommendation. Uh, and I looked at this new, we have new information that was just passed out to us tonight about best practices and I think that if there is interest to the City Council and the staff to review the fire codes or fire regulations or best practices, that's something that we can certainly put on the agenda or have put on the agenda in the future and we can discuss it if we wish to redo, redo these. Just as a very quick little one comment here on page eight of the best practices that states measures that allow for large fire vehicles to travel at high speeds, generally allow and encourage high-speed driving by all vehicles and result can be a significant decrease in safety for all users. Now, the fire department has a district. I don't know beyond actually what their district includes so far as all of Warrenville and what other developments, so they may be looking at it for developments of a different type or a different style than we have here in Warrenville. So I'm very much in favor of the project here. If we wish to discuss this other aspect at another time, perhaps that's the time to do it. So I'm very much in favor of voting yes here.
Alderman Berry.
I have also read the article, um, on the best practices and, um, they continually talk about, uh, streets that are twenty feet wide. We have actually looked at twenty-one feet that we're recommending and, um, I'm okay with that. Um, I like the fact that there are sidewalks which, uh, will take the people off the street and that's why I don't mind a narrower road. I'm pretty sure that the trucks will be able, the fire trucks will be able to negotiate those streets and also be able to park in the area between the buildings and be able to get their, what they call their aerial trucks. I think that's what it called, it's called, uh, to be able to be set so that they can get up to that third floor level. Also, what, uh, I, um, like about the project itself is that these buildings are sprinkled and that makes a very big difference to me. So I'm in favor of the twenty-one feet.
Okay, I would, uh, just add that there was a, in, in conjunction with what Alderman Berry said, there was a nice article in the Sunday Tribune about, um, the popularity, the growing popularity of walkable communities. So I think, uh, the idea that making streets narrower and having with that narrower street, a sidewalk or a trail makes a whole lot of sense in terms of, uh, providing a community that is one that is gonna be popular with people that are looking for a place to settle. It's the future. The suburbs have been dominated by vehicles for decades and I think that is changing for the betterment of the suburbs. Um, people are being attracted from urban areas to the suburbs because we are providing them with some of the amenities of an urban area, which would be the ability to get out, leave your car somewhere, maybe live without a car and spend your time on a trail or a sidewalk. So, um, this proposal makes perfect sense to me. That's my comment. We might as well finish this up if everyone's done and have our roll call. Clerk.
Alderman Berry.
Aye.
Alderman Goodman.
Aye.
Alderman Widener.
Aye.
Alderman Hoffman.
No.
Alderman Bavir.
Nay.
Alderman Davalos.
Aye.
Alderman Ashauer.
Nay.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Motion carries. We'll move on into item K. Would someone like to make that motion? Alderman Ashauer.
Accept Community Development Department, Development Committee Recommendations, waive bid requirements and authorize the purchase of a replacement server from AVI System Incorporated in the amount of twenty-four thousand four hundred and eighty-four dollars.
Second. Second by Alderman Bavir. Discussion. Alderman Goodman.
I just wanna be clear about what this is. This is a no-bid contract which is going to a current contractor whose services of late have been quite poor. It's not clear to me that the future solution we might adopt for this service will continue to need this piece of it, especially once we have time to fully consider our options. I understand that the staff feels rushed now because Channel Ten has been broken. But I also consider that this rush to put in a solution is at least partly, if not mostly, the fault of this same contractor. So all of that seems to be a bad idea to me. Um, it's a large investment, twenty-four thousand dollars. It's not in the current budget. I'm not sure if this requires a budget amendment. Perhaps our finance director can speak to that, but if it, even if it doesn't, having invested that twenty-four thousand dollars might make other options, considering other options for this service in the future, less cost-effective because we've already spent money on sticking with what we have now. Considering the challenges that we have with communication with our residents in a town that doesn't have a newspaper which doesn't get much attention from the larger newspapers, I want the decision about our communication with residents to be the best, the right decision. Not one that's the rushed one, not one that's the easy one, just to continue doing what we're doing without thinking about it very much. And that's why I oppose moving forward with this. I think instead the staff should take the time now, since we've been down for a while, to consider the best options for moving forward instead of just the fastest ones. Thank you.
Alderman Davalos.
Yeah, I would like to speak with, um, well, I, I would just like to ask a question about, uh, when we talked about this before, there was some discussion from staff that this was a server that could be used with, uh, when we go forward and perhaps replace the whole system, would still have use in, in another company or another system or, or whatever. Cause I know a lot of thought has gone into this and, uh, I understand what Alderman Goodman is saying. I just wanna recollect what was talked about last time.
Assistant City Administrator White.
Thank you. Alderman Davalos, that's correct. The Latronics server that we are recommending is not in any way specifically tied to AVI systems. The, um, contract before you, the quote before you is for them to install the server. We can at any time find another third-party, um, installer and, uh, maintenance company to work with the equipment that's in that room. In fact, I did speak to a representative at Latronics who provided me with contact information for other companies in the Illinois Chicagoland area that also, um, sell their equipment, that service their equipment. So we are not specifically tied to AVI at this point.
Do you have any sense from the people you've talked to and what you've read that this server will be, um, a modernized server that would fit with, with another system? I mean, we don't know everything about all the systems, but I'm just wondering if, in your opinion, will we have to gut this to go with somebody else or can we integrate it?
No, we should be able to integrate it. It is a server. Um, the, there is several components of equipment in that room. Um, a couple of them are Latronics. The cameras are a different company. The projector is a different company. The sound system's a different company. There, there's various different companies that, uh, manufacture the various pieces of equipment, so I have no reason to believe at this point that that server wouldn't be able to integrate with different components and different parts, just like the current Latronic server before it broke was working with all of those different components from different manufactur- manufacturers. Thank you.
Christine, as I understand this, what we have is another, uh, example of a, of legacy system here that's been kinda put together over the years that, um, has kinda placed us as analog folks in the digital age and we're trying to keep that going long enough to have a discussion to replace the entire system, which will be considerably more expensive, perhaps a quarter of a million dollars worth of expense. This particular item is gonna buy us some time that'll keep things going, that'll keep our communications open and our meetings being recorded for a period of time to give us time to consider the next option. Is, is that a fair assessment of what we're trying to do?
That is a fair assessment. The, the long-term strategy is to review all of the components of that room. There's several other pieces of equipment that are either nearing end of life or, uh, may already be at end of life and are still being supported by the manufacturer, but will not be supported for much longer. So we do need to review all of the components of that room and a recommendation will need to be made by staff to the City Council to replace, um, or go a different direction if that's what the council decides that they would like us to do, but at this point, we would be looking at replacing and upgrading whatever equipment needs to be replaced and upgraded. Uh, and that may or may not be with the current vendor, but this would, the server would allow us to get back up and running with Channel Ten, be able to record and not only record, but then, uh, transmit the meetings live again as we were doing before on Monday nights.
Thank you. Anybody else? Alderman Goodman again?
It's my understanding that there are alternate options used by different bodies of government, that having our own TV studio, which is kind of what we have, is an outlier, that that is not a typical arrangement for most bodies of government that have their meetings on local access cable. Given that that's the case, even if we're talking about just replacing the whole TV studio with new equipment, um, that isn't the only option for providing this service to our residents, um, providing them with access to these meetings, providing, uh, the local community with a Channel Ten to broadcast notices. Is that correct?
That is correct. There are other options. Um, I have discussed briefly with some of the other communities in the area and you're right, there are different ways to, um, record and look at broadcasting or trans- transmitting the videos and the data. That is, in my opinion, a bigger discussion. Um, we have not looked at changing the way that we record and, uh, transmit the information currently. We could do that, but I think that would require some additional direction from, uh, from the council. Some other communities, bigger communities, they have communications staff that can videotape and do different things with the recordings. There are some communities that don't record the meetings at all. Um, that is also an option. I don't know that, right now, without doing- I don't know that, right now, without doing a more comprehensive survey of what all the other communities are doing, I don't know that I can provide an answer as to how many are doing what we're doing versus something else. But that's certainly something that we can look into.
Alderman Goodman?
Well, in my opinion, before we make an investment of a quarter of a million dollars or before we make an investment of $25,000 into an antiquated system, we need to consider other systems. We do not have a communications officer. That's certainly true. We don't invest in personnel who specifically are tasked with providing communication to the public. And that is a failing, I think, in our city. That's an area where I receive negative feedback from residents, that we're not telling them what's going on enough. And our current, you know, Channel 10 capabilities, while I'm sure provides more camera angles and, you know, nice views of our meeting than some other communities and the county perhaps, you know, that's still not getting the job done for enough people. So investing $250,000 in personnel who have expertise in this area and other forms of communication and things like, I don't know, I mean, I personally am not a huge proponent of social media, but social media is another thing that a lot of people do pretty cheaply. You know, taking a budget of that size, you could do an awful lot of things. It just seems to me that, yes, maybe we need to have the conversation about whether we just continue as we've been doing for years, just because we've been continuing it that way, or whether we have a closer look at our communication strategy and where our communications dollars are going and whether that's the best place to put them.
Thank you, Alderman. City Administrator Coakley?
Thank you. Certainly, this is a council decision to make about the type and level of service that we're going to provide. Absolutely, that's a policy decision. This is an approval of an expenditure larger than staff can authorize. That noted, what we're, what is before you tonight, in my opinion, is a patch system. We're filling in a piece of equipment to get back to where we were. We're just simply going kind of back to the future to be able to have Channel 10 working. It's not working at all. There's one message on it. We finally got back up there. It says it's not working. That's been four, five weeks now, despite our best efforts. This piece of equipment can get that back working, so messages, the message board can go back. There are still people that do rely on Channel 10 for information, and they can watch, if they have local cable, they can watch the replay of the meetings, the school board meetings, et cetera. Other people are using YouTube, and they're watching the replay. Eventually, we hope, I can't remember, Christina, just nod or something. I'm not sure if this piece of equipment will give us a live stream. I think that's something in the future. It's future. That's with this piece of equipment. Okay, we have had requests for that as well. Sorry, I'm confusing technology. So that would get us an additional benefit just from this one piece of equipment, as well as that we could work towards live streaming those messages so people that aren't, don't want to have cable and can watch it on their computer. That may or may not be important to the council. Again, that's the council's decision. The bigger discussion we've committed to having, if the council wants to, our, Christina has said she would look into some possible other options. I want to respectfully there remind everybody, we just discussed through the budget process, we have just started, I think we're three weeks maybe, into the Enterprise Resource Planning System process, which has Christina 50% of her time committed to that very expensive, very big investment. Our finance staff, two senior people are committed about 50% for the next 18 months, 12 to 18 months. And then you know the story with our community development staff, but they're not really involved in public works with this particular project, so I won't bring those things up right now. We're also working just to fill some gaps in our staff. Our administrative services coordinator retired last year. We worked very hard at figuring out the right way to do that position. We just promoted Alma to that role and then moved the vacancy on a four-person staff from one side of the office to the other. We're working very diligently to bring on a new executive assistant. So certainly, we can get to that discussion, but it can't happen in the short term because we'd have to put the brakes on some things that have already been approved and can't be stopped now. So we can get to that. We need some time to get to that. So I would suggest this is a good purchase to get Channel 10 back up so we can communicate with those folks that do want to watch it on a cable channel. We can at least fix that piece of the problem and then get to the bigger discussion. We're not saying we won't do that or we can't do that. We just need more time to get back to that part. Thank you.
Okay. Alderman Wilson?
Well, administrator just made my point or my question was, without this server, we cannot get Channel 10 working. So it's a yes or no, do you want, and I'm in favor of getting the information. We talk about communicating with our residents, and this is one way that there are people who do watch that. And so this is the thing is, so without it, we cannot have Channel 10 operating. So I'm in favor of the AVI system.
Okay. Alderman Widener?
Thank you. I'm in agreement with many of the things that Alderman Goodman has said. What we have, though, is a public service that's being provided, and I'm not sure that we can relinquish that or the, or drop back in providing less, if that's a major. Problem that the city has is with our communications, and people are having trouble with our website and receiving our communications to reduce the quality and go back. On this public service seems to not be the, in the best in interests. I guess I'm curious, do we have any idea how many people are affected by the loss of Channel 10 and the public service? Do we have any idea of how many people might be watching us?
Assistant City Administrator White?
I do not have that information, and I'm not really exactly sure if I would be able to get that information. It would probably come from Comcast or AT&amp;T possibly. I know I've gotten maybe about a half a dozen communications via email, phone calls, or public comment, asking when Channel 10 would be back up and running. But as of right now, that's about the only information I could give you about how many people have responded or commented.
Is, would any more statistics be obtainable without going through a huge research project?
I can't answer that question right now. I'd have to, I'd have to reach out and figure out how we would get to that information.
Because if what we have is going on YouTube, I know that's very accessible. And, you know, anybody who wants it could have YouTube access, you know, even, even without, and thereby, you know, reducing the need for Channel 10 viewing, unless the council wanted to go that direction. But I just think that, you know, one or the other, as far as providing a public service, YouTube, as long as we would advertise it and, you know, make mention that our meetings were available on YouTube afterwards, I think it might be adequate to provide as a public service. I think it should be looked at, and we should know more. And I guess just in response to the thing that I keep hearing about the load that we place on staff, I am sympathetic to that to a degree. But when I was in an administrative position and I would talk about the strain, I had a boss that would say, "Well, I guess you'll have to work harder." And that's sometimes what happens with people who are blessed with an administrative position. Now, there's, you know, sometimes only so many hours in a day, and I recognize that staff is carrying a heavy, heavy load. But when, you know, something as important as a public service and an expensive one at that is being discussed, I think it deserves the time, the staff time necessary to properly evaluate it and come up with our options. Do we want to provide something that's better, the same, or backtrack on the quality of public service that we're providing? Thank you.
Okay. Alderman Davalos?
Thank you, Mayor. I think it's a safety thing. I talked to a lot of people that listen to Channel 10. When you move into the community, I think you get a, some kind of a blurb from the welcome wagon or somebody who's delivering it. They're still doing that. They used to. A lot of people look at it for emergency things, leaf pickup, things that are posted. Like you said, the school board meetings. There's all kinds of stuff on that channel that people, I mean, I've talked to a couple of people that they say they have it running in the background while they're just doing work around their house. I think it's listened to. Now, not everybody has cable, and I understand all that, but I do think people use it. And in emergencies, I think they go to it, if they can't, you know, get to the website or their, whatever. So I am really sort of invested, from my point of view, in getting this thing up and running. And I do feel that this server probably can be incorporated into something going forward. Also, when we voted on the ERP, it was clear that this was going to take a lot of staff time. So I would like to respect that, and it's not that we can't squeeze things in here and there, but I really think if some things can wait and we can move forward, at least be where we were for a little while, I think it's going to be a little bit different, 12 to 18 months, when every single thing is not going to get done right away. And communication is important. We've been talking about that up here in all different ways for a long time. But I think things have gotten better, you know, Facebook page, all kinds of things people are finding out. But everybody has a different way they access information, and there are people out there that rely on Channel 10. So that seems to be important to me, or it is important to me.
I would just like to say that I agree with Alderman Davalos. And I remind the council that you voted to do this ERP, which is an 18-month project, which is incredibly complex and difficult. And you've put the burden of making the success of that project on staff, as well as the burden of getting the regular work done that they have to get done every single day. I think it's a little bit unrealistic to say, no matter what you're doing, you can still work a little harder. There's this thing called burnout, that you can expect so much of people to a point. When they get to that point, they're no longer doing what they need to do. The ERP is an incredibly important project. I assume that everyone on this council who voted for that realizes the implications of that either working or not working. It's not something that it's just a matter of throwing time at. It takes a lot of effort, and it takes a lot of concentration, a lot of focus, to make sure that that works. That's going to totally transform the way that we do business and the way we keep our records in a very, very positive way. It's extremely important. To me, that's the first priority. It makes sense to me at this point that in order to keep Channel 10 up, to keep our communications going the way they were going, we put this Band-Aid on the system. It makes sense to me that at some point, we have a discussion going forward as to how we're going to eventually have communications with the community and what, how that's going to be done in the best way possible. The time for that is not now. The time right now, what needs to be done from my perspective right now is get things going the way they were going, keep them going for a while in terms of communications with a modest investment, and keep in mind that at some point, we need to have a discussion as to what we're going to do ultimately. But to expect that staff can just keep taking more things on without that affecting their ability to do the important things they've already been assigned, I think is unrealistic and unfair. Alderman Goodman?
I'd like to start by saying that awarding this no-bid contract is not a referendum on either whether or not we keep Channel 10 or on the ERP. In my view, awarding this no-bid contract is a reward to a contractor with poor service. The bigger picture, I think, that isn't quite being captured here is something that Assistant City Administrator White just said, that even to spend staff time on considering our communication strategy is a policy decision, and that they need direction from us, from the city council, on whether or not to spend their time even researching it. We need to give them that direction. Now, we don't need to tell them, "Start working on this tomorrow." But if we don't talk about it now, when are we going to? And my comment on working harder and 12 to 18 weeks of focus, or months, I mean, of focus on the ERP, my comment on that is pretty simple. Other things are going to break in the next 12 to 18 months. The only reason we're having this conversation is because something broke, and we had to work harder on something we were not expecting to have to work on. And that is going to happen again in the next 12 to 18 months. Other things are going to come up, and it's going to have to be dealt with. And this is one of those things. And I think just because it has broader implications and because it has a quarter of a million-dollar investment looming over the decision means we need to be cautious with it before we award no-bid contracts to poor contractors. Now, do we want staff to spend the next year researching this before everything else in the AV room dies and we have, you know, a perfect system all in place before we have any problems? Maybe that isn't the best use of staff time. I'm not saying it is. I'm saying city council needs to give staff the direction, which staff just asked for, to consider what policy we want in terms of our communications and what services we should provide. And if that means the city council needs to put this on an agenda and have that discussion and have that policy consideration done so that we can direct staff what it is that we want them to research and what we want them to do, then I think that's a better direction to go in than to just say, "Well, we've got to make the decision now because staff is too busy to deal with this." Because other things are going to break in the next year, and this is going to come up again. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Berry?
Well, the, according to the, what's written here, the recommendation is to authorize the purchase of the replacement server. Does that include the installation of the replacement server and making sure that all the other equipment that is in that room working properly? I know you said that, Christina, that you knew of another company, actually, the company that owns the server itself or manufactures the server. Does this work also? Did we check on the price from them by any chance?
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Assistant City Administrator White?
Thank you. The company that manufactures the server does not install it or maintain it. They only work with third-party companies that do this type of work. So AVI is one of those approved retailers that resells their equipment and installs it and maintains it. They do have other companies in the area that will do that. This contract specifically, or quote specifically, is for the purchase and the installation of the server. That is not specific to anything else in that room. It is just the current server replacement purchase and installation.
So the installation does include, though, making sure that the, not only the cameras work, but the audio works, that the, whatever else needs to work with that server is going to work?
The installation include, yes. They've already looked at whether or not this piece of equipment will work with everything else that's in that room, and that's already been determined to be a match, for lack of a better word, with everything else in that room. So they are confident that it will work with all of the other equipment that's currently there. This $24,000 does not include replacing or gauging whether or not a camera needs to be replaced at some point. That's, that's a separate project.
Right, right. Because my, I guess, concern is, is that, you know, I understand that people really do like to see Channel 10, and they like to find out what we are talking about because I've been asked the question numerous times over the last few weeks, whether I was at the Honey Milk Restaurant, or I was at the Family Foods, or if I was at church, even driving home from work. I was stopped by someone in Emerald Green last week, and all they wanted to know was when Channel 10 was going to come back on. Because not only do they get their information about what happens in the city, but they also get information about other things that are going on in the city, whether it's from the library, whether it's from the Park District, whether it's even some of the churches put information on about what their organizations are doing there. And so I think that's what they're looking for also. And I think right now, we are so lack in communication, as Alderman Goodman said, that we have to put something out there to keep these people informed as to what's going on. It is a bigger thing that has to be taken into consideration. And we do have to have a bigger discussion about this, and it is going to take a little while to do this. But I guess for me, this is a kind of a stopgap measure so that, that Channel 10 works. It works. It gets these people back and informed in our city. And I think that's what I'm looking for now, but I'm also looking for, down the road, a new way of communication. of communication. So I will be voting yes for this.
All right, and perhaps it's time to do that. If no one else has anything to add, could we have a roll call, please? Alderman Davalos?
Aye.
Alderman Ashauer?
Aye.
Alderman Hoffman?
Aye.
Alderman Widener?
Nay.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Berry?
Aye.
Alderman Goodman?
Nay.
Alderman Bavir?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Onto item M. Would someone like to make that motion, please? Alderman Bavir?
I'd like to make a motion to accept Community Development Committee recommendations and direct staff to install and remove the floral planters for WIB in 2018 only, and analyze the actual effort involved in doing so.
Second?
Second, Alderman Goodman. Discussion. Alderman Berry?
The reason I brought this up is that last week, I guess, I just wasn't thinking, and then on Thursday evening, I went to our monthly meeting for Tourism and Arts Commission. And as we sat there talking, it finally hit me that Summer Days and 4th of July receive money from the city, and that money through grants. And then that grant then pays the city back for city services. I'm wondering how this is going to work out with AIB, since City Services is going to provide the hanging and the removal of the baskets. Is this money, that is in their grant, which is somewhere between $4,000 and $5,000, is this money then going to be going towards the city to pay back this? Or is this an experimental year? I'm not quite sure where we're standing here and seeing, how much is this going to cost the city? You know, I guess this is more questions that I should have had, but it kind of, I guess I kind of had to cogitate on it for a while and see where I was going. And I know that last year, you know, I know they would like to use this additional monies for watering, but last year, they asked for bigger hanging planters. And they got the bigger hanging planters, but those hanging planters, from what I understand, were supposed to hold more water, so therefore, there wouldn't be as much watering necessary. And because now they don't have enough money to water, they're not putting the planters on Warrenville Road, Williams Road, excuse me. And I just didn't, you know, that was never brought up last year, when they said they wanted to change and get these bigger baskets. You know, they didn't tell us at that time, "Hey, we're not going to put planters up, because we're going to make bigger baskets." So I'm kind of confused as to what it is that Public Works really wants to do with this. And I guess the city administrator, how we want to, financial director, how we need to work out this money, this $4,000 to $5,000 that normally was paying for the hanging and the removal of these baskets. Is this money going to go back to Public Works, or pay Public Works for these services?
Okay, Finance and Information Services Director Dolstron?
Having had no time to think about this particularly, other than right now.
My phone.
What we could certainly do would be to, similar to what we do for Summer Days and the 4th, 4th of July, we could easily allocate part of that money back to the city side of things to reimburse ourselves for doing that. What I would not like to see us do is make that money in and above, or over and above the amount of their grant, because then we've stepped outside of the grant, and we're setting a dangerous precedent for moving that forward. So if we take it out of the grant, they've already been authorized, that seems to me to be a good way to go. Anything above and beyond the grant, I really don't think we want to get into.
Yes, because my issue is that I also don't want to go above and beyond the amount of the grant, but at least we would be using some money to reimburse Public Works. And then we would be able to see, at the end of the year, how much it really does cost Public Works to do the work that WAIB is requesting. And therefore, then, the following year, WAIB will be able to put that in their grant request for hanging and removal of baskets done by the city. So I don't know what to do at this time, whether I want to put this on hold until, I just don't know.
Okay, city administrator, clarification?
Yeah, I just wanted to chime in on that. If the council wishes to put that in practice, you would need to make a vote. I don't have this worked out yet either, because I'm just thinking it through, but you would have to have a vote to change the grant, because the grant was approved with the council to allocate the money for Warrenville and Bloom. So I would think there'd have to be something that would reallocate some of that back to the city. I know it's covering the costs of hanging the baskets, but it seems like that would be the right process. Also, stepping into the whole discussion, I'm assuming that Warrenville and Bloom, in their request to the city, was that they would get all the money, and the city would take that off their back. I don't remember that coming up as part of the allocation of the money, so we certainly need to communicate. Whatever your pleasure is, it's a council decision again, but we would need to communicate with Warrenville and Bloom. That might change some of their planning. I wouldn't want to, I wouldn't want to see anything done that would, for lack of good words, mess up their whole process this late in. I think they're planning to hang the baskets this week, or at least receiving the baskets this week. So I don't know how that plays into it, but just want to caution everyone to make sure we're communicating with Warrenville and Bloom.
Okay, back at Alderman Berry?
I think Financial Director Dolstron will agree with me here in that the money has been allocated to Warrenville and Bloom, whether they pay Bowwigs or they pay the city back, is, that doesn't matter. It's just that the money is for that purpose, and we would be paying the city back instead of Bowwigs. That's all it is.
That makes sense to me. Alderman Wilson?
That was the question I was going to ask. Who puts them up now? Who do you pay now, and you pay?
Bowwigs.
Okay. So it's just a different installer now, and the monies you go to the installer?
Bowwigs indicated they were not able to do it anymore, so WIB asked if the city could take over that for them. So this is an experimental process. Again, the money's allocated. It's a question of whether the city's going to be able to provide that service for the money that's in the contract.
Right. Okay. And so then this year is an experimental year anyway, with the city doing, and then we could take that into account. Okay, thank you.
Alderman Goodman, comment?
No, I was just going to make the point that Administrator Coakley made about Warrenville and Bloom having a meeting tomorrow and wanting to go ahead with hanging the baskets this week. So just to say that, you know, delaying the conversation to the next meeting would, I think, create more problems than it solves, particularly since this is an experimental year. I know that Warrenville and Bloom, you know, wasn't assuming that they'd be able to do this, but they were certainly hoping that they could, and have the city step in and hopefully take over this responsibility, because the Bowwig people had been doing it for years. And whether that cost that Bowwigs quoted and the cost that the city would spend on something similar is the same amount or not, I have no idea. But I suspect that because the full amount of the grant that was applied for wasn't awarded to Warrenville and Bloom this year, I think the difference was about $6,000. And since they were cutting back on the flowers, there was some discussion at a meeting I went to, possibly a month ago. I know I've missed at least one since then, but there was some discussion that if the additional money didn't have to be paid to Bowwigs, that they would try and put the flowers on Williams Road Bridge, perhaps, and then have the extra money for watering, and be able to do what they had fully planned for this year instead. So if they have to pay that money to the city, then obviously that will not be able to go forward.
Alderman Berry?
Well, that's what my concern was, because, you know, when they came to us last year about these baskets being bigger and holding more water, and they were going to spend more money, even though we already had these baskets on the, or Warrenville Road Bridge, they just wanted bigger ones and holding more water. And now we've got double sets of baskets and no planters on Williams Road Bridge. You know, I don't understand, I guess, the thinking of WIB, you know, what they were doing. I mean, I understand this was a last-minute thing, to come to the city and ask for help, because Bowwigs is unable to provide their service that they need. But at the same time, I think the city needs to be paid back, just like the 4th of July and Summer Days is paid back for their services.
I'm presuming that's the intention of WIB, that they're not assuming that they're going to be able to add on to their grant. And you could certainly put that into your motion tonight if you want, and, you know, make sure that it's followed, that this comes out of the grant, whatever the cost of the city is, comes out of the grant, if that's your intention. Alderman Ashauer?
Can we do it by just changing the motion to, at the end, it says analyze the actual effort involved in doing so, and authorize staff to negotiate a repayment for the service? That way, it wouldn't exceed the grant?
It needs to come back from the grant. You have to say it needs to come from the grant. Excuse me, I'm sorry.
Alderman Goodman?
I think the way it's done for Summer Days, et cetera, is a little bit different. Like, there's the $24,000 that we raised to $30,000, and then there was an additional $11,000 that's set aside for reimbursing the city workers, but that we never really spend that amount. I don't think we even get very near it, correct? I mean, it's always just sort of a maximum cap that's kind of put out there, and then we move some money around based on the actual time spent, which is never anywhere near $11,000. So the amount that they know that they're getting, which is now the $30,000, I believe, is just fixed, and then they don't go up and down based upon how much time city staff spends on it. So they know what their budget is in advance, and the $30,000 that they can spend.
Kevin?
The $30,000, you're correct. The $30,000 is the fixed piece. The next piece, which is the $11,000, that's the maximum that they've been awarded. We have not hit that at any point since we set that maximum.
Right, okay.
We just base it on actual cost of the city staff time involved, and some other, the portlets or whatever, I think, are also in there as well. So there is some of that. We do not hit the $11,000 and have it yet.
So these outside volunteer organizations, like America and Bloom and the Friends of the Fourth, you know, they have a fixed amount of money that they're given by the city, and then they budget that for their various things inside that amount, to perform the services that they're performing for the city. And I just want to keep that in mind, that this is a service that Warrenville and Bloom provides for our city, to beautify Warrenville, and for our aesthetic enhancement. And, you know, yes, we want this to be done fairly. I think making changes at the last minute makes it a little more confusing, makes it a little less predictable. If they're trying to hang the baskets this week, this wasn't even raised last week, it seems a little bit harsh to me to go back and take that money away this year, especially since it's a trial year, and we don't know how much money it will be, and they're then going to be completely unable to plan how much they're going to need to allocate for that, and how much money they can spend that's within their grant. That adds more headaches for people who are already volunteers and trying to do things that are nice for the city. Why don't we just see how it goes this year, fix an amount, and then charge them that next year outside the grant, like we do outside the $30,000 that's spent on Summer Days? I mean, maybe we give ourselves that money in a similar, separate amount that's allocated outside, because it seems like, you know, TAC doesn't award the Summer Days and Friends of the Fourth grants either. So if we're going to treat them separately, we need to treat them separately. And if we're going to treat them the same, maybe we should try treating them the same. I don't know. Maybe this is a longer discussion than we want to have tonight, but at the same time, I feel like this is very last-minute for them, and very last-minute for us. So whatever we come up with is going to be a one-time decision, and might not be the same in next year.
I think that's a good point to keep in mind, is that the baskets are showing up. They have to be put out. So we need to come up with a solution for what's happening. Now, they're up against the wall with this thing. They need to get it done. They've asked for our help. We're certainly, I'm certain that there's plenty of support for the benefit that they give to the community, and there is certainly time in the near future to hammer out a long-term arrangement if this works out well. But at this point, we keep the process going for them, which I think is very important. Alderman Berry, you have an additional comment?
I'm not opposed to keeping them going forward with hanging their baskets, and I think the city would do a fine job doing that. My only concern is, is that the money that's there, that is allocated for that, be used to reimburse the city for what's in that grant. Because now you're talking about giving WIB special treatment versus all the other people that are getting grants. That's an issue. Because all these other people getting grants now can come back and say, "You made an adjustment. You fixed this. You gave them more." And that's my big concern. I can't give them more. We don't have more to give. And unless WAIB is going to, or WIB is going to come in and ask now to say, "Hey, the city's going to use the additional money. Now, where can we spend it?" Are they going to come in and ask us that? I don't know. That's what I don't know.
Emily, do you have any insight that you could help? Okay. Alderman Wilson?
I think that if we use the motion as already through, through, remove the farm, of the planters in 2018, with expenses being deducted from the WIB grant funds, tells us that we're going to take the money out of the funds allocated to WIB. Now, does that, I mean, you're going to, without this, they were going to pay Bowwig, right?
Right.
Okay. So now, instead of doing that, the funds, the cost that it costs the city to do that, would be taken from their funds that we've already allocated to WIB. We've done that, have we not?
Yeah.
So they can't use this money for anything other than the installation and removal of the planters, and I thought that was the whole idea.
Okay. At some point, we could then entertain an amendment to the motion. Let's take one more comment before we try that. Alderman Davalos?
Thank you. Oh, yeah. I think that whatever was going to be paid to Bowwigs, I think, does need to come back to the city. I would put the caveat in there that if it costs the city more, and I think that's the experiment we're looking at, it may cost the city more with everything. So we don't ask Warrenville and Bloom to pay that more. We just ask them to kind of do what they did last year with the Bowwig money, and then we determine after a year, in consultation with Public Works, is this a doable thing? And then they can make their, they can ask the, you know, TAC grant to be more. But at this point, I think the city should get back at least what Bowwig would have gotten back. I mean, it just seems logical to me.
Assistant City Administrator White?
Thank you. I wanted to add on to what Alderman Davalos just said. If the council's going to amend the motion, I think it is appropriate to clarify that we are withholding or paying back from the grant up to the amount that was allocated for the watering, or I'm sorry, for the hanging and the removal of the baskets under the Bowwig line item, so that there isn't confusion that if it exceeds that amount, that we're taking the entire amount out of their grant. It would just be up to whatever that amount was.
And if it potentially exceeded the amount, by some amount, that would be something that the city would just absorb.
Correct. And that would be evaluated as part of next year's review of this project.
Okay. So would someone like to make an amendment to the motion, then? Along the lines of what Assistant City Administrator said? Oh, we have, have we made, yeah, we made the motion. Yeah. Did we, we had, the original motion, who was the, Alderman Bavir was the mover, and the seconder was Alderman Goodman. So do those two people agree to the amendment as stated by Assistant City Administrator White?
No.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, where do we go from there?
If someone wants to make that amendment, they can make it, and then there's a, then there will be a vote on the amendment, and then a vote on the main motion.
Okay.
In whatever form.
Would someone like to make that amendment, make an amended motion? Alderman Widener?
I'm just going to take a stab at it. I'm not necessarily tied to this language, but it seems like we could do something like motion to accept Community Development Committee recommendation, drug staff to install and remove the floral planters for WIB in 2018 only, initiate a charge back, not to exceed last year's charge. Initiate a chargeback not to exceed last year's charge to Bowwigg and Sons for installing and removing the planters and analyze the actual effort involved in doing so.
Okay, this is going down a rabbit hole pretty quick here.
I think you're close, but I think what you want to do is tie it to the amount that was awarded per this grant. We don't want to say last year because then we're looking at some other year. We want to tie it to the amount of the grant that was awarded for this year. And then, I think you've done what you're trying to do.
Okay. Initiate a chargeback and tie it to the, and?
The amount.
The amount funded in this fiscal year.
Right. Let's go back to Christina.
I think you want initiate a chargeback not to exceed the funds allocated to Bowwigg and Sons in the fiscal year 19 grant.
That's what I said.
All right, so we have?
Thank you for the question.
Well, hold on, hold on. Let's, if you have a discussion, raise your hand, please. We have an amendment that has been motion, a motion for amendment and a second. Now, let's discuss that, right, attorney?
Correct.
Any discussion on the amendment to the motion? If seen none, let's have a roll call for that, then, please. And I'm assuming everyone understands what the amendment means? Okay?
Right.
Christine, do you have it written down for me? Because?
Do you want to state it again, just to make sure everyone knows what they're voting on?
I think I see where possibly the problem is. Okay, so accept Community Development Committee recommendation and direct staff to install and remove the floral planters for Warrenville and Bloom in 2018 only. Initiate a chargeback not to exceed funds allocated to Bowwigg and Sons for installation and removal of the baskets and analyze the actual efforts involved in doing so.
Okay.
You can't say Bowwigg.
Christine, I think she wants, can you, do you have a copy of what you just said?
Right.
I have it written down.
Yeah. Please be recognized.
But I just want to make sure that's right.
Alderman Berry?
You really can't put Bowwigs in there. You just have to say for the installation and the removal of the planters.
Right.
Okay, take, just take the word Bowwigg out and you're fine.
Okay. Seconder, the motioner and seconder agreed to that minor change?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Now, back to the vote.
The amendment?
Yes.
Alderman Berry?
Aye.
Alderman Widener?
Aye.
Alderman Hoffman?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Ashauer?
Aye.
Alderman Goodman?
Nay.
Alderman Bavir?
Aye.
Alderman Davalos?
Aye.